P, we got Tim Witherspoon in the building. Son of two-time former heavyweight champion. He has a dope nonprofit working with children and the youth. Um, he is a former pro boxer as well.
Um, I'm glad to finally be here. We scheduled this about maybe like almost a month ago and uh.
Why only sixteen fights?
It overlapping with my dad's career and all that. Um, I got injured. I got a fake shoulder. It's not fake. Uh, yeah, man, I have a gym full of fighters. My own and we got Tim Witherspoon, the third, my son, he's a fighter.
So you're going into the political realm now?
Yeah, yeah, well, it's always been something that has been um in the back of my mind. I've always been political. Um, when has a reason to keep fighting also because I'm gonna be the first African-American male in the Bristol Township School Board.
Shout that out.
And that's important because we need people.
That look like us.
That look like us to represent, but not just represent our own people. We need people that don't look like us to see people like us in positions of power. So I'm going to the school board as a representative of my whole community.
Yo, 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 it's your boy Dell with OPP. We got Tim Witherspoon in the building. Son of two-time former heavyweight champion. He has a dope nonprofit working with children and the youth. You know, he gets down and busy with them. Um, he is a former pro boxer as well. And he's also, um, you know, he's a political candidate now. He's running for school board member um and.
Bristol Township.
Bristol Township, correct, Bristol Township. So he's doing his thing now. Thank you for coming.
No problem. I'm glad to finally be here. We scheduled this about maybe like almost a month ago and uh, you know, today is the day.
Yeah, I think we, we had some communication about a year ago and um, I think it fell too, but I'm glad it happened. Yeah, definitely, definitely. Yes, yes, yes. Um, well, I mean, you know, you could just give us a brief background of who you are. We'll start off with that.
Yeah, I mean, you already mentioned that, you know, my father was a two-time heavyweight champion of the world. Um, which kinda paved the way for me to uh have my own career uh as a professional fighter. Um, you know, uh, did uh, before I start touching, I just wanna give a brief background of that. Um, I'm kinda blessed in a way because uh to become a professional fighter, you kinda have to be a professional fighter before you're a professional fighter.
Hmm.
Um, and I had a father who was my trainer, who was a professional fighter. So at the age of eight, I was already training and doing everything as if I was a professional fighter. Uh, so when I say that that kinda paved the way for me to uh be a professional fighter, it kinda like, I was a professional fighter when I decided at the. It was actually not at the age of eight, it was at the age of like six or seven. Um, and I'm only realizing that now, being retired from ten years of, of actually doing the sport, that the reason why I became a professional fighter is because I was doing everything as a professional fighter earlier in life.
Hmm.
Um, you know, my career lasted about ten years, which is good. I had sixteen pro fights in those ten years and.
Okay.
Um, you know, the, the, I don't wanna say in the money part, but the glam, the glitz part of boxing and all that. Uh, it, it was like a roller coaster for me in boxing. Um, but the knowledge, the degree that I gained from being in boxing my whole life uh has turned me into who I am today.
I'm sure it, it helped for your brain to be able to do everything that you're doing now.
Everything.
Um, I'm sure there's a lot of relations and connections that you built.
For sure, you know, like a lot of my friends, they were going to college and stuff. And I actually happened to leave school in eleventh grade to pursue my career in boxing.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, so um, you know, that year in high school, uh, I happened to win the Golden Gloves, which is not really a top, top tournament, but it's enough for you to say, okay, I belong here, you know, whatever, I can do this. Um, and I had one foot in the door with who my father was and all that. And I don't recommend this. I gotta, I, I have a speech to do to uh, to the middle school, the township that my son goes to and I'm gonna, we'll, we'll talk about that later. But I go and I tell these kids, don't do what I did. Cause I'm a fun, you know, I, what I did is not normal and it doesn't normally work out. Um.
Drop out of school, you saying?
Leaving school, yeah. Uh, now, if it was, if this, that's what excites you. Uh, if you have a plan, if you align yourself with what you're gonna do, then yeah, do it. But uh, don't just blindly, especially boxing, uh, which is such an unpredictable sport. Uh, don't, I, I go to these schools and, and some of the kids say, I wanna be a boxer. And I go, why you wanna be a fighter and you, 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 you got everything you need already? How you gonna train when you already got video games and uh, that you, the, there's no reason for you to fight?
So, so you saying, um, are you saying boxing is not the sport to, to get into? Or are you encour, are you not encouraging?
I would never, so I'm talking practical, I'm talking, I'm talking sense, I'm talking. I, and, and I'm doing it because I lived it, you know? It's not like I'm just on the outside looking in. What I done to this point in my life is absolutely nuts. To leave school and decide, not just decide that I'm gonna be a boxer. You gotta understand, you gotta break down what that means. That means that you're deciding to feed yourself by going hand to hand with another man. That means that you're deciding to feed your family by going hand to hand with another man.
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
So I decided to leave school. I've flown to other countries knowing.
The punishment.
That there's gonna be someone in their hometown waiting for me and we have an organized fight in the stadium. And I've won.
Hmm.
And, and I've turned their fans into my fans. But to leave school to do something so primal is crazy. And, and, and then to turn that into something that is sustainable for you to actually build something off of, um, is not very uh, for, for my perspective. I don't have, I don't have many friends that have done this.
Some might say that's just you going after your dream.
No, exactly, exactly. But again, when I was seven, you know, uh, and I, and I spoke it into existence. Uh, for some reason, everything was laid out for me. I, I already had a professional trainer, you know? I, I didn't have to go looking for it.
Yeah, what was the conversation like when you told your, um, I guess when you told your parents you were gonna drop out of school?
Um, so I come from a home that is very, and I've been very outspoken about this in my recent speeches, um, that my father is a product of the inner city. So he is someone who you guys probably have heard a story about before. Uh, and not just him, I'm talking about in general where you get an athlete from the inner city who comes into a lot of money, but doesn't necessarily have the upbringing or the wherewithal on how to manage not only his money, but his life. Um, to no fault of his own, you know, I'm forty, I'll be forty-one next month. And I can look back on the things that uh, he had to go through in his life that led uh, us to have to go through some things that uh, other people might not have to go through. But there's a series of things that happened, um, that allowed that to happen. So my parents had broken up when I was about thirteen. Uh, the nice house that we lived in uh, got sold. But my father was a single parent. We stayed with him. Um, he was still fighting at the time. That's how he fed us, you know? He was forty-four, still fighting, still knocking people out too. Um, and, and that time, me and my sisters are kinda raising ourselves a little bit. You know, I'm going to school, but I'm coming home just to go to the boxing gym. You know, I'm not really focusing on my homework or focusing on uh, my education as much as I am boxing. So even though I would go to school, even though I would pay attention, uh, one of my favorite subjects was social studies, history. Um, but that was because I could just remember facts. I didn't, I didn't have to do any math equations or anything like that. Uh.
You wanna know about people's actual experiences, yeah?
So, um, that was really, that's something that I'm still interested in today. But um, that a lot, that kind of upbringing had me falling back uh, in school when my parents originally uh, separated. Uh, that year was one of the roughest years of my life and I actually had to end up repeating eighth grade.
Hmm.
Um, so then I ended up going to high school and it was just me waking up every day, getting myself to school, coming home and nobody checking on my homework or anything like that. There was no guidance. So when it got to me being in eleventh grade, being behind a little bit, um, and having this championship under my belt now though, I made an executive decision, um, and I signed myself out of school. Um.
So there was no conversation?
Um, you know, there was a slight conversation, but my parents both were in their own world at that time. So, um, they actually, and it's kinda like a, they, they trusted my decision at that time that I was gonna make the right decision.
Yeah.
Um, and they actually ended up being kinda lucky because um, I have two sisters that graduated from Temple. Uh, I'm a business owner. My other sister is a nurse's assistant. Um, we all have got, come out of that kind of lifestyle that we had to come up with and made something of ourselves, so.
Yeah, that's what's up.
Lucky.
Yeah, no, definitely. Um, talk about your, 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 your pro, your pro career. Um, what was the toughest thing about it?
Uh, the, now that I'm way removed from actually fighting, I would think the toughest thing, and, and if I'm honest, was to stay focused. Um, to keep your blinders on, to make sure that everything outside of you uh, didn't distract you from what you were trying to do.
Was there a lot of distractions?
Of course, uh, everybody has distractions. If you're a boxer, you're supposed to be worried about one thing and one thing only is fighting. But sometimes you have to worry about your bills. Sometimes you have to worry about your wife. Sometimes you have to worry about your own thoughts, your own, control your own self. Um, and the best fighters, the best athletes uh, can hone that in. You know, even some of them, they might, when they get the rest time, they might not be as in control. But the best athletes are able to hone that focus in and, and keep their eyes on the prize. So that is probably, if I was to go back to my seventeen, eighteen-year-old self, I would tell myself, keep that focus, don't be distracted cause you, you're in control of everything.
Hmm, hmm, no, that's true, that's true. Um, it's, it's always something, I guess, right? You can never just go ahead and just hone in and focus on uh, what you gotta focus. Um, even myself, I think about some of the things, like I had to take a, a, a nice little break the last three months. Um, you know, it was actually in like two car accidents in like six a month period. One was my fault. Um, one wasn't, some guy just hit me. But I think about the first one, if my mind probably wasn't so distracted with outside things I was dealing with, I probably wouldn't have had that situation. But um, yeah, when you're trying to run a business and start something, you can never just focus on what you wanna focus on, it's always something else out there. Um, with that being said, um, why only sixteen fights?
So along with it overlapping with my dad's career and all that, um, I got injured, I got a fake shoulder. It's not fake, but I had to get my shoulder repaired. That took me out for a year. Um, and there were some things that I could have done that would have accelerated my career. Um, I'm not really a hindsight kinda person to look back on the negative things on, you know, uh, the woulda, coulda, shouldhas kinda thing. Um, I'm more of saying that everything turned out the way it should've been. Yeah, so I was only supposed to have sixteen fights. Um, if I would've had seventeen fights, maybe I wouldn't be able to be here talking to you. You know, I'm, if I would've had seventeen fights, maybe, who, who knows what, who knows why? But this, this is, this is meant to be.
Give me the biggest highlight during your um, pro career.
There's so many, um, you know.
That's good to say.
There is, there's so many. Um. A big one was my first fight when I was overseas uh, in England because I, it was early in my career, I believe it was like my third fight and I'm, and I'm flying over to another country. Uh, and I'm thinking, cause I'm from Philadelphia, you know, and nobody's gonna be able to whip me, nobody's gonna be able to beat me. I'm used to doing that when I'm here, you know, uh, going to other cities and everything and their talent just not being as good as the talent that's here. So as a young kid being cocky, I'm going over there thinking, oh man, there's no way nobody in England's gonna be able to beat me. But if you go into some of those gyms over there, uh, you'll notice that there's some real fighters and it's not just fighters, it's inside their culture, it's who they are. You know, i- is what they do. So even if they don't have the skill, the mentality of a, of a fighter from the UK, whether they be English, Scottish, or, or Irish.
So like the mentality, like they might be more disciplined in their regular.
Yeah, well, that too, because boxing is probably their number two sport behind soccer, what we call soccer. So I'm fighting in a stadium on my third fight, Don Valley Stadium. And I, I'm not really, I'm, I'm, the American crowd is different. You know, you're, you're here, they're, they're clapping, they're cheering, but you go over there, they're already cheering when you're in the dressing room. They're chanting, I don't know, soccer songs, you know? Ah, whatever. And um, so for my fight, I didn't know at the time, but they were, they were chanting American C-word in the crowd, yeah. American, um, American boom. Um, but I'm, I'm not, I, I, first of all, um.
Wow.
You don't realize when you're over there that the accent is actually hard to pick up a little bit. So, um, it took me a while, I was going over there for like five years after that. But um, it took me a little while to pick up on their accent. So I took a friend after the fight to tell me what they were chanting. Um, but to come out and, and, and my first fight, like I feel like a soldier, you know what I mean? Because I have a scheduled fight, I'm on a plane, going to another town, fighting somebody in their hometown where he is the good guy and I'm the bad guy. They're cheering, you already hear them cheering against me. I end up winning.
Now, that has to be a, a dope experience, though.
But not just that.
You won.
I won, but I got out of the ring and the crowd tried to attack us.
Oh.
They tried to fight us. So, me being a young naive kid, I'm like, yo, what's up? And then my dad has experience, he fought over in England. He, yo, let's go, let's get back to the dressing room. Um, we get to the dressing room, but the next day, everything like, everybody was cool. And I, I ended up, I have a lot of fans over there now.
Oh, that's what's up, that's what's up. Um, you know, so I'm, I'm, I'm gonna assume, you know, you, eventually you just called it quits. You couldn't do it, the body, you had the injuries. Um, so how did you get involved in the youth? What prompted you to go in that direction?
So if you're in boxing, you're automatically involved with the youth. Um, the boxing gym is not just a place where people come and fight, it's a recreational center. People come not just for the sport, there's people that have to live in these gyms sometimes. There's people that come to these gyms and ask for money for gas. There's people that come to these gyms and have marital problems. There's people that come to these gyms and have problems. Their kid is at the gym because they have a problem with their kids. So if you live in the boxing gym your whole life, you see these things, it's embedded in you. You know that everybody is gonna need help eventually. You know that it doesn't matter, the, the, boxing does this. It, it shows you that anybody can make it.
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody can whip their ass.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
But also it shows that when you're in that gym, anybody could be going through any type of situation.
Now, that's true.
So I grew up seeing that. I grew up sometimes being that person that needed help. So when I opened up my own business, my plan was to open it up and have it be an activist journey, you know? Uh, that is our marketing plan. We, the energy we put out is what we get back. Um, and I think that that's a good marketing plan for a lot of people. Be in your community, show them that you care, show them that you're not just there to take. You're there to give back as well.
Okay.
Um, and it shows in my business that, that, that it does come back to you.
Yes, 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 no, that's dope, that's dope. Uh, well, we've been running twenty minutes, we're gonna take a quick break and then um, we'll, we'll talk more about that. Um, yo, yo, it's your boy Dell. We back with Tim Witherspoon from the break. Um, we were talking more about his nonprofit and I wanted to ask him the purpose of his nonprofit?
Yeah, um, so like I was saying earlier, you know, growing up in a boxing gym, you see people of all kinds having all kinds of issues, all kinds of problems, all kinds of things that they have shortcomings with. Um, a lot of people in certain communities just don't have the disposable income that other people have. You know, and sometimes something happens. Um, my idea for the Witherspoon Community Initiative was to single out certain issues that I see happening in the community and try to step in and help out where I can.
So you, like an invention on sight, yeah?
Yeah, so the, the thing that I came up with for our last thing was the backpack and school supplies drive where um, it was the first time that we did it. Now, I've been giving out free haircuts every year since we've been open as a, a gym for kids to go back to school with. Um, this time we incorporated it for the first year for uh, our neighbor, for whoever uh, wanted it to get school supplies and backpacks. So the community all donated school supplies. Uh, we got backpacks donated and everything and we gave them out. Um, and we didn't just give them out and say, look, this is for lower income people. We gave them out to whoever wanted them because the community initiative is so that people can have money to spend on other stuff too. You know, if I can bring the whole community together and we can raise, well, imagine if there was ten of me doing a school supplies drive and backpack drive. We could, we could furnish a, a school.
I like what you're saying, like um, you're giving it to no matter what your financial situation might be based on paper. Cause just because of what anybody's bringing in, you never know what someone is going through or doing with whatever hardship happens and people like to keep that under wraps. Um, it seems like you, you, you definitely did not alienate the middle class, which is dope.
Well, you know, it's in my heart though, because I'm looking at these families that even can afford it. Why don't you go spend that money on a pizza so y'all can step, spend some time together? If I can provide a, a, a crowdfunding of school supplies for you not to have to do that, why not go take your kids to a movie so you can spend time with them? Go buy that board game, go buy that video game that you've been promising your kid that you haven't been able to. Because I took care of your school supplies and your haircut. Hmm. Um, that's why I'm doing it. I don't care about any, I don't care about what comes back to me cause I already got everything that I need. I don't need anything, you know? So everything that I do now is to put it, put out there.
No, that's, that's dope. Um, now you, you, are you coaching any of the young boxers?
Yeah, yeah, I have three Golden Glove champs myself.
That's what I'm about to say.
I have a, I have a professional fighter, he's fighting uh, in Bailey's in Atlantic City, uh, December sixth. Uh, yeah, man, I have a gym full of fighters, my own, and we got Tim Witherspoon, the third, my son, he's a fighter. Um, yeah, man, that's what we do, that's, that's, that's what pays the bills for real, you know? And that's something that um, will always be a part of what I do. No matter what I do uh, nonprofit-wise or politically, uh, it all started from when I was six, seven years old.
Being a pro.
Being a pro. And, and, and real quick, um, the, that's my father's contribution, you know, turning me pro at that age. My mother's contribution was telling me that whatever I did, just be the best at it. So when you put those two together, um, that's what's given me this good run uh, at forty, forty-one years old.
Yes, no, no, definitely, definitely, definitely. Um, so you, you're going into the political realm now.
Yeah.
Um, you just won your primary for a school board member.
Yeah.
Um, you wanna talk about that? And like, how did you, what made you decide to run?
Yeah, well, it's always been something that has been um, in the back of my mind. I've always been political. Um, when I, I actually got suspended in school and this is before I knew my rights. Um, I was very against the Iraq war, um, when I was in high school. Um, to the point to where I would not stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag. Um, I didn't believe that it was the right thing to do. Um, and my form of protest, uh, my First Amendment right was to just sit down while everybody else stood up and pledged allegiance to the flag. I wasn't doing it because I didn't like my country. I wasn't doing it because I um, hated anybody. I was doing it because I believed that what we were doing at the time was wrong. And the only thing that I was doing was just doing a silent protest. And I, I made it three days before my home economics teacher sent me to the office. And uh, I ended up getting in-school suspension for that. Um, yeah, I didn't realize at the time that that was against my First Amendment rights. Um, now at this age I do. But ever since then, um, I've been, you know, socially driven. Uh, things that happen in my community or around the world, I'm drawn to uh, notice and to actually try to come up with solutions in my mind. Uh, and I think that uh, a lot of people around me noticed that and I've been told multiple times, you know, over the years that I should be in politics, to the point where people actually offered to fund it and, and everything. And I denied it for a long time. I was fighting at some times, then I was taking time to build up my business, build the gym up. Um, and then the time just came to be the right time.
What, what was it about people that, um, what did they see in you? Like was there, is there a specific situation or something that happened?
I don't know, man, I don't know.
Were you, were you, were you against the grain against something? And they were like, yo, yeah, we need that guy.
I think like you see like with my nonprofit and what I do with people at the gym, people know that I really care.
Okay.
I think people know that um, I, it's not about my ego, it's not about uh, what I could benefit that. I've, there's been many a times where I've done things where I've not benefited financially because it was the right thing to do. Um, and when people see uh, true authenticity, uh, someone that is not trying to get over on you, uh, then they support that, they see that they want other people to be like that. Um, also when you do that in your business, that's what people, that's how people support you. They give you money, they give money to people that they like, that they feel comfortable with, that they trust. Um, and I think that that's why I got a lot of support, uh, because people do trust me and, and all I'm doing is being my authentic self.
Um, you got a senator that endorsed you?
No, a state representative.
State representative, okay.
Yeah, yeah, uh, state representative Tina Davis. Uh, there's, so there's four of us that are running uh, as Democrats for the school board. Uh, as Democrats for the school board, uh, there's me, there's the current school board president, Jim Morgan. There's uh Drew DiDonato and Galus Over, there's four of us, and this is important for me to say. Uh, on film because there are uh, a group that's trying to penetrate the school board called Moms for Liberty. Um, and they are a group that are trying to ban books, they're a group that are focused on things that don't matter. Like what gender your child wants to choose, uh, they are the kind of people that will waste our tax dollars. On lawsuits to drain our school district just so they can make a point instead of. Uh, really focusing on the things that matter, like, are we gonna be able to keep our kids having free lunches? You know, um, are our kids and our teachers both living their life to their fullest excitement? Are those things that we're focusing on, uh, this Moms for Liberty group are not. They're trying to control people with their own ideology, which is something that we shouldn't be doing, we should be allowing people to be their true selves. Because that's the highest vibe in the world, bro, being your true self, who am I to tell you? That you can't be who you wanna be and think that I'm gonna be the one that gets good karma for telling you not to be who you wanna be. That's crazy, right? But that's what this Moms for Liberty group is doing, that's what me and my colleagues. Uh, from the Democratic Party are trying to prevent from happening to our school district, our money is very, very. Um, valuable right now, every penny counts because we don't know what funding is coming from the federal government to our district, so. Uh, we have to really be careful on what goes on.
Um, so I I guess, okay, I have two questions, um, what's your first initiative after you win?
After I win, uh, school board? So first of all, like I said, my whole thing when I get on the school board is to make sure. That these teachers and these kids live life to their fullest excitement, so. With that being said, as long as they are not hurting themselves or other people, I have nothing to do with that. The curriculum obviously is a state mandated mandated thing, uh, I believe that. My main job right now is defense, making sure that we keep things into our school, in our schools, certain histories that they're trying to take away. Certain books that are trying to be erased, um, I see with my own eyes, I'm there, um. One of my running mates, I'm most, I'm not my running mates, one of my competitors, I have text messages. And I have uh screenshots of some of the things that this person is about. You know, so, um, I know what is coming, what they're trying to do, uh, you're looking at. Someone who won the primary uh with the most votes, that's me. Someone who has a reason to keep fighting also because I'm gonna be the first African American male. In the Bristol Township School Board. And that's important because we need people. That look like us to represent, but not just represent our own people, we need people that don't look like us to see people like us. In positions of power, so I'm going to the school board as a representative of my whole community. Because that little uh kid that's starting first grade or second grade that sees me on the school board. He he'll be, he'll be used to it, even if he's a white kid, he'll be used to it when he's an adult. It won't be the first time anymore, I can't believe I'm the first male, African American male. But we need, you know, me to be on there for everybody to see, not just our people.
Um, you said living, um, helping teachers, being able to live to the fullest?
Yes, yes.
Um, but can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, man, there's a lot of teachers that are actually worried, um, right now, burnt out, that they're. Not able to, um, there, there is an issue of discipline in some of the schools. Uh, and they're not getting a lot of support in that way, that's something that has to be addressed, um, also. We're in charge of their pay, you know, so a lot of these teachers are stressed, they're working a lot of hours and. They feel like they're not getting compensated right and everything like that, so what we wanna do is we wanna make sure that there's a perfect balance. The community has to understand that their money is being spent in the right areas and the teachers and the students have to feel like the money is being spent. In the right areas as well, um, if we don't come together with a, 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 a feeling that everything is balanced. Then it's not gonna work, if.
Cuz I'm sure there's a teacher shortage right now.
Uh, I'm not quite sure on, on, on that number, I know that there's a bus driver sho- shortage, I know that we're having issues with bus drivers in the school district. Um, but a lot of my teacher friends and and everything, they wanna teach kids, they wanna come to school, they don't wanna be. Uh, drawn to meetings because someone believes that uh their child shouldn't be taught about sexual education. When children are going through puberty at ten, eleven years old, uh, my own children have gone through puberty. They need to learn uh about these uh transitions in life. And we live in a day and age where if we don't teach them, they're gonna learn anyway from somewhere else.
Bad experiences.
So a lot of these Moms for Liberty groups, they think that we're teaching them about, um, gender affirming, affirming, uh. Affirm, I don't know, gender identification, whatever we know, uh, and and things like that, but no. The same things that we were taught about the reproductive system, about, uh, you know, protecting yourself sexually. Uh, those are the same things that are being taught right now, but these teachers are under attack. Because of somebody else's ideology of things that aren't even happening. And don't even get me started on the federal government, the Department of Education is being run by. Someone that is just totally un- uh qualified in Linda McMahon, so. So, you know, there's, there's, and 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 the local community has to understand that a lot of. Things that happen on the school board, um, depend on the federal government too, so. Um, there's a lot of waiting, a lot of seeing what's gonna happen, um, for the financial side of things.
Wow, wow, what's, where do you see yourself going from here, if you win?
So like our man Cheese said, is, things are divine, things are supposed to happen, you know. Um, and the reason why, uh, one of the big reasons why I ran for school board is because I could see it in my mind. I could see it, I saw myself behind the desk, I saw myself amongst those people, so I said, okay, it's time. Um, I haven't been able to look past that yet, um, I haven't been able to see what is gonna happen for me past that. So to me, that tells me that, um, I'm going right up to the point of where I'm supposed to see.
Good answer, not the answer I wanted, but good answer.
I don't have, I don't have, I don't have an answer past that.
Well, we, um, we get ready to come to a close, um, any last minute statements?
Yeah, man, you know, I just want everybody to, uh, like we were talking about earlier, to just start focusing on ourselves. Uh, start looking within because when you start getting distracted by uh the media, uh, by your bills. By uh other things and it's hard to really focus on what you need to focus on, which is. The ideas that come to you when you're thinking, we are all creators in this world, we all create everything, everything that we've ever done. And this was created by us, but if you're clouded, if you're thinking about other things, then you're not thinking about creating. And you have to create if you want a future, so. We gotta start looking inside.
Yeah, nah, that stops development, that's real, that's real, um, definitely, I guess be stay in the moment is what they say.
Be present.
Well, listen, we really appreciate you, uh, for, for coming on the show, coming out here, um, how can they find you?
Damn, man, I ain't even studied, I ain't even practiced my uh tags, hold on. You can always Google me, Tim Witherspoon Junior, a lot'll pop up, Tim Witherspoon Junior on Facebook is terrible, uh, I I on Instagram. Uh, also our gym is, uh, uh, capital W, capital S, underscore boxing. On Instagram and the same on TikTok, so, yeah, but basically you, you Google my name, we, we go and get everything.
Alright, make sure you guys vote for this man, make sure you, November fourth?
November fourth, the election, November fifth, we get to work.
Let's go, let's go, let's go, but that wraps up our episode with Opposing Perspective Podcast, I'm your host Dale. You can find us on YouTube, Facebook, TikTok and IG, thank you.